I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good evening. This is the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. We will start with introducing board and staff members present. I am Teresa Flynn.
Beth Cassavant.
Carlos Garcia.
Sorry.
Greg Richards.
Michelle Conlon.
Kevin Mizakar, Town Manager.
Keith Baldinger, Assistant Town Manager for Operations.
Nick Haas, Benefits Coordinator.
Maybe next time I'll just go around the table, which way make it easier. First item on our agenda is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Item number two is to review an act to approve the minutes of the September twenty third, twenty twenty five meeting and October seventh, twenty twenty five workshop.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Item number three is announcements and reports. Do any board members have any announcements this evening? Mr. Garcia.
Madam Chair, I do have one. On Thursday, October ninth, the Affordable Housing Trust and the Community Preservation Committee held a joint meeting and voted to approve a funding agreement between both bodies. As this board knows, the Affordable Housing Trust does not have a reliable funding stream, and so this agreement will act as a framework for how the Affordable Housing Trust will utilize funds and communicate with the CPC on ongoing projects. And the Select Board will have to also vote to sign on to this agreement, and that'll be a future agenda item.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Is anybody gonna announce the Economic Development Plan tomorrow night? Because I would do that.
Why don't you do that?
Okay. I just wanted to remind the public that the Shrewsbury Economic Development Plan will have their first public meeting tomorrow evening, October fifteenth, at seven P M. at the Senior Center. And this is in conjunction with the Shrewsbury Development Corporation, who's working with consultant on an economic development plan focused on key transportation corridors. The plan will identify opportunities along each corridor for new development, increasing jobs and growing the tax base. The plan will increase community input to help, or incorporate community input to help develop the recommendations for land use and zoning changes, as well as prioritizing investment along each corridor. So again, that's tomorrow at the Senior Center at seven P M.
Great, thank you. Item number four is the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Mizakar.
Good evening, board members. I have a few updates for you this evening. First, I wanted to take the opportunity to celebrate a major upgrade and milestone in the continued expansion of our sewer system. So along Route twenty and Clu Street, we have recently completed a major project. This project extended the public sewer system along Route twenty, continuing from the infrastructure previously installed by the developer of the new apartment community. As part of that project, which occurred at five twenty six Hartford Turnpike, the new extension now provides sewer service from five twenty six the whole way down to the UPS facility, which is west of Route one forty, supporting future commercial growth and development opportunities along the corridor. Major components of this project included replacing the former Orchard Meadow Pump Station with a new modern facility at seven eighty-five R. Grafton Street, which is known as the Clu's Street Pump Station, installing a new gravity sewer from three ninety Hartford Turnpike up to Clu Street and to the old Orchard Meadow area, installing a new force main connecting the pump station to the existing sewer at Puritan Street. The Clu's Street Pump Station was placed into service in early September, meeting the established project timeline. The total cost of this project was just over three million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with UPS contributing one point one million dollars for aspects of the work in this area. So this project enhances sewer capacity and reliability in the area and positions the Route twenty corridor for continued commercial growth. As we also look at additional, so I just want to congratulate Mr. Maroni and his team for overseeing that project and continuing that critical work along Route twenty. Takes a lot of oversight and engineering planning, so thanks to the DPW team. Also continuing in the DPW vein, our roadway improvement program continues for the year. The current plan is for the first course of asphalt to be going down on Roman and Hialeer starting this Thursday, October sixteenth, and moving to Hunter Amberly and the Birch Pratt Karen Road areas on Friday, October seventeenth, weather permitting. The top coat would then be placed the following week, again, all subject to weather conditions. We're also happy to let the board know that we've have an accepted offer for the executive assistant position. Ms. Juanita Anderson will begin her work with the town on the twenty-seventh of this month, so she'll be at your second meeting. And also, we have a favorable update with regards to Maple Avenue, fifteen Maple Avenue. This is the former Empire Dry Cleaners that the town is moving for tax title foreclosure on. The court allowed the town's motion for summary judgment. And once we receive the official judgment for the court, we will be in receipt of full ownership of the property. I do want to remind the board that once we receive ownership and it's transferred to the town, that we'll need to then determine our intention for the property, determine any equity that may be in the property versus what charges were owed to the town, and then make a decision preliminarily, at least if we're going to retain the parcel or sell the parcel. So we have sixty days to do that under the new tax title law. That's, you know, a challenging window of time to make such a critical decision, but we'll engage and advise the board as best we can. And we do have the opportunity to change that in the future if we change our mind, but that's a new requirement that this board is charged with under the new state laws. So those are my updates for this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
May I just ask a question? Mr. Manager, could you just give us a quick update on the status of the work happening on Maple Ave?
Sure. So the primary work that's going on with Maple Avenue is the sewer force main replacement, and that work is largely done for this year. There is some private work that's gonna potentially occur over the next few days, but our work in replacing that critical sewer force main is done for the season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy thirty-one, and we do have one resident. Mr. Ron, is it?
Pews.
I want to make sure I pronounced it correctly. You can feel free to come up there, or if you'd like to sit at the table, whatever's most convenient for you. Wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Right. Ron Pews, seven Westwood Road, Shrewsbury, Mass. I'm here with some information on the decision of the Planning Board regarding application for special permits one to seven Maple Ave, Haskell M M L L C. Permit number S P dash oh eight dash twenty twenty-three. The special permit via V one one dot U dot four, height greater than thirty-five feet and two and a half stories was not granted. Here's the summary of that particular permits, special permits. Please be advised that the Town of Shrewsbury Planning Board has filed a decision on the application for special permits to allow mixed-use development containing fifty-three apartments and approximately seventy-seven thousand square feet of retail, section V one, Table one. Special permit for front and side setbacks grave than ten feet in section V two dot U dot four, and the special permit for parking within the side setbacks, section V two U six B small B, at one to seven Maple Avenue property located on Shrewsbury Assessor Tax Plan twenty-two plot one five eight zero zero zero. The application was granted by the Planning Board on April thirteenth, and the decision was filed with the town clerk on April fourteenth. A copy of this decision is also available in the Planning Department. The twenty-day statutory period for the special permit, as described on the Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Section seventeen, and the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, has commenced. Copies of any appeal shall be filed with the Shrewsbury Town Clerk. In accordance with section seven subsection F dot three dot E of the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw and Chapter forty, Section eight of the Mass. General Law, hereby advises that any person aggrieved by the decision of the Planning Board relative to this matter must file an appeal in the office of the Shrewsbury Town Clerk. The appeal must be filed within, filed within twenty days of the date of the decision. There are no appeals other than the abuddas, and there were no other special permits granted. So they did not grant the special permit needed for the height of the building to be three and a half stories. I just wanted to make sure that that information got out before item ten on the agenda tonight happens.
Thank you. Item number six is a seven oh five P M. Public hearing to review an act on the change of ownership interest application of Tavern in the Square Shrewsbury LLC, DBA Tavern in the Square, one ninety-three Boston Turnpike. The proposed manager is Stephen De Souza, and you are not Stephen De Souza?
I am not. My name is Elizabeth Pisano. I'm Councilor for Tavern in the Square. This application is to change the ownership of the upper-tier company. Garnet Station Partners has purchased the grandparent company of Tavern in the Square. You will not see any changes to the restaurant. The operations will remain exactly the same. The manager of record will stay the same. Employees' menu, everything will stay the same. It is just a change of ownership, and as a result of that, a change of LLC manager for the licensed entity level. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Board members, any questions? Seems like everything is in order, and reviews have been done, so. I appreciate you coming in, but I don't think we have any questions from the board at this time. This being a public hearing, are there any members of the public that are here that would wish to speak? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So motion carries. There's no questions or comments. I'll entertain a motion on the ownership interest application.
I move the board approve the change of ownership interest application of Tavern in the Square Shrewsbury LLC, DBA Tavern in the Square, one ninety-three Boston Turnpike for the restaurant alcoholic beverage license with Stephen De Souza as manager.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number seven is a seven-ten public hearing to review an act on the underground storage tank license application of Hartford Gas and Market LLC, three thirteen Boston Post Road West, Marlborough, Mass. For the property located at one ninety-three Hartford Turnpike in Shrewsbury. This license would authorize the storage of flammable and combustible liquids at this location as required under the Massachusetts Fire Code, in my understanding, is Carolyn Parker. Carolyn Parker Consulting is here to represent the property owner.
Yes, good evening. My part of the gas station industry is underground fuel storage, and I do the fire suppression to allow self-serve. So once they get past the Planning Board, Zoning Board, I step in, and this is kind of the last stage of getting a gas station approved. It's for the underground storage tank license. I need that license to send the fire suppression to the state. They won't give me approval for self-serve without a license. Do you want to know? Basically, they're putting in twenty-eight thousand gallons of gas, twelve thousand diesel. They're gonna have a canopy up front for gas, then they're gonna have one, the trucks will go around the back, and there'll be two spots where trucks will, they do what they call a master slave, because they have two tanks, the big trucks, so they master slave, they pay at one pump. And the tanks are located right over there, so the tank that drops off the gas, the fuel, will do about the same thing that the big, the eighteen-wheeler's are doing.
Just for a point of clarification, for the public, you know, the license from the Select Board grants permission for the land use, and all relevant code requirements and reviews are addressed separately through the permitting process with the Fire Department and the Building Inspector's Office and the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, so we do tend to stay in our lane on, on this one.
Yeah, the application for license gets approved by the Fire Department if they approve it. And I have the actual license, so if I get approved and it could be signed, I could use it with, to file my fire suppression.
Board members, questions? Okay. Are there any members of the public that are here that would like to speak on this matter? I'm sorry, Mr. Mizakar, did you want to make any? Nope, okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion on the storage tank license application.
I move the board approve the underground storage tank license application of Hartford Gas and Market LLC for the property located at one ninety-three Hartford Turnpike, Shrewsbury.
Seconds.
So can I show you, give you the license?
No, we'll take that, and then we'll, I'll reach out to your cap.
They'll just sign it, and then you'll, okay.
I have a motion that's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Same to you. Item number eight is a meeting with Mr. Sam Rajwani, lead petitioner of Article seven of the October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five special town meeting. If it'd be, if there's two of you, feel free to sit at the table. That's easier. Can you see?
Or he, I'm just gonna run the slides for him.
Okay. All right, then you can stand, whatever you're most comfortable with.
Just gonna wait for the slides.
And then I think I'll just need. Can you give my computer, I think, access just to, so you can see my.
Is it not allowing you to share? Is it?
I don't think she's been entered into the meeting yet.
Yeah, she just joined. She, you see her in there?
Yeah.
Does she have ability to share?
I just put share screen up, um.
Is it the same presentation that you emailed us today?
Yes.
Okay. Nick, do you have that? So Nick could, if that, I mean.
Is it, where is it? Oh, sorry, okay, perfect. I think this will work, because yeah, I think there was a couple little.
Looks like.
Yeah, it's behind, let's see, I mean, I think that's the only had it right here, something. Or do I have to put it back into the, that says stop sharing, so it should.
It's not coming up.
Yeah. Show my screen anyways.
Infinity mirror though.
Just turn this off.
Yeah. We still have it, let me see.
I don't know.
I don't know, it's not.
Okay, just hit this one, stop presenting.
Yeah.
What did I have? Share screen again.
Okay.
Do the entire screen.
Okay. Is it here?
Yep.
Yay.
Yay. Sorry about that. Good evening, Select Board. I'm Sam Rajwani. I'm a senior at Shrewsbury High School. I began educating residents about water fluoridation in Shrewsbury as part of a school project, but that project concluded at the end of my last school year. I've decided to continue this effort because of the residents. So many people have reached out to me, telling me how important this issue is to them. They've told me about skeletal fluorosis, hypothyroidism, diabetes, and many other issues that they link to water fluoridation. I believe this board has also received emails from residents. So today, I'm here just as a Shrewsbury resident who was called to act by other Shrewsbury residents, and I'm going to give a presentation providing some details about Article seven on the warrant for the upcoming special town meeting on October twenty-second. If town meeting votes in favor of Article seven, Shrewsbury residents will be able to decide whether or not we want fluoride in our water for the first time in our town's history. I'm here today asking this board to recommend Article seven at town meeting. So I'm sure you've read the exact language of the bill by now. The article says that if town meeting votes in favor of the citizens' petition, they will order the Board of Selectmen to petition the state legislature, legislature, asking for a home rule exemption on Chapter one eleven, Section eight C of Massachusetts General Law. Then it will be put on the ballot. It's a two-part process for a ballot initiative. To reiterate, the bill goes from town meeting to this board to the state legislature, and finally, back to the town for all of the residents to vote on in a general election in May of twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven, depending on how quickly the article makes its way through the legislature. Essentially, if town meeting votes in favor of this article, then in an upcoming general election, the residents of the town will vote on whether or not they want to continue to fluoridate the water. Originally, this presentation was going to be focused mainly on educating the residents and giving them a voice, because that's what the citizens' petition is about at the end of the day, in my eyes. The Finance Committee on Thursday, though, said they would like to see a more data-driven presentation, and I'm happy to oblige. I'd like to start today by shedding some light on how the practice of water fluoridation began. The studies that launched water fluoridation were done in the nineteen thirties by a chemist named Gerald Cox and were funded by the sugar industry via a program called the Sugar Fellowship. Cox's studies found that fluoride reduced dental caries by about twenty percent on average. Also in these studies, he found that halibut liver oil, which is a strong source of vitamin D, along with phosphorus and calcium, reduced dental caries by forty-five percent. His papers citing the positive results of fluoride are now widely agreed to be filled with caveats, weakly supported assumptions, and contradictory results, yet they launched the practice of water fluoridation. And since then, many sugar industry-funded scientists with undisclosed conflicts of interest have exaggerated fluoride's effectiveness as a solution to tooth decay and downplayed its harmful side effects. I've highlighted this, as well as some other key points on my slide. And the reason that I'm mentioning it is because many of the dentists and public health officials who promote fluoridation don't truly understand why many studies that support fluoride cannot truly be taken at face value. If you have any questions about this, I'd strongly encourage you to read an article entitled, "The Sugar Industry's Effort to Manipulate Research on Fluoride Effectiveness and Toxicity: A Ninety-Year History", which was published in the Environmental Health Journal last month, and has over three hundred and fifty source citations. It's where I found the information I just shared with you, and much more information that I don't have the time to share. The paper is listed at the end of my presentation as the first citation on the second works cited page. I believe my presentation will be available on the Select Board's website attached to the minutes of this meeting. Now, all of us know the benefits of fluoride that have been championed for decades. To many Shrewsbury residents, fluoridated water is the status quo. Fluoride can prevent and even reverse early stages of tooth decay, and notably, it's proven to be more helpful when it is applied topically via things like the brushing of teeth or application of dental varnishes than when it's being applied systemically, which is via the drinking of fluoridated water or taking of fluoridated supplements, or fluoride supplements, for instance. Systemically applied fluoride, notably, only helps teeth that are developing or erupting, and children and infants can get it through things like foods and formula. Even for those with developing teeth, topical fluoride application offers the most significant and immediate benefits. Relatively recently, many of the risks associated with fluoride have come to light, and I did talk about this during my last presentation on May twenty-seventh of this year. But for a quick refresher, dental and skeletal fluorosis are the most well-known problems associated with systemic fluorine, fluoride intake, and thus water fluoridation. Dental fluorosis is a very common condition, primarily seen in children, that ranges from mild to severe. It's permanent, and the damage done to enamel can't be reversed. It is mostly cosmetic, although some studies have been done that link dental fluorosis in children to skeletal fluorosis in elderly people in the same communities. Skeletal fluorosis has three stages. Stages one and two are the most common, and they're marked by symptoms like pain, arthritis-like symptoms, and potentially bone spurs. In twenty twenty-four, the United States Toxicology Program, which is the federal body regarded as toxicity experts, performed a systematic review of all available literature that considered whether or not fluoride posed cognitive harm. They reviewed seventy-two studies and found that fluoride, at least at levels of one point five milligrams per liter, is associated with reduced IQ in children. Scientists have also observed a statistically significant association between fluoride and adverse effects in children at levels lower than one and a half milligrams per liter. The United States Toxicology, National Toxicology Program has also very recently conducted a pooled benchmark dose analysis to more precisely define the hazard level of fluoride. This analysis was found to have a very strong statistical methodology, something many studies, both for and against water fluoridation, lack. It specifically found that a one-point drop in IQ is to be expected for each point two eight milligram per liter of fluoride in a pregnant woman's urine. Notably, maternal urinary levels range from point eight milligrams per liter at the median all the way up to one point eight nine milligrams per liter, depending on degrees of exposure. Fluoride has also been shown to inhibit insulin, resulting in hyperglycemia, increased insulin resistance, which potentially can contribute to glucose intolerance, increased blood glucose levels, and impair glucose tolerance. Notably, impaired glucose tolerance, which is oftentimes a precursor to type two diabetes, has been found to occur with fluoride intakes of only point oh seven to point four milligrams per kilogram per day. And currently, the oral reference dose for fluoride, according to the EPA, is point oh eight milligrams per kilogram per day. Fluoride has also been proven to inhibit the thyroid's ability to absorb iodine, thus interfering with the thyroid gland's ability to produce hormones, and high fluoride exposure has been linked to an increased risk of hypothyroidism. A good example of where we see fluoride's risk is in the twenty twenty-four ruling from the federal court case Food and Water Watch versus the EPA. After being shown evidence, which was interpreted by experts from both sides, the judge, Edward Chen, ruled that fluoride at a level of point seven milligrams per liter, or point seven parts per million, posed an unreasonable risk to children's IQs. Point seven milligrams per liter is what we currently have in our water. Where there is that kind of risk, there should also be some sort of choice. Judge Chen argued that an appropriate margin of safety was not applied to fluoride that accounted for vulnerable populations, nor was one applied that accounted for the fact that fluoride was found to cause harm at four milligrams per liter. Applying just a tenfold safety margin that accounts for vulnerable populations, the safe level of fluoride in our water would be only point four milligrams per liter, which is, of course, less than the point seven milligrams per liter we currently have. In April of this year, the EPA announced that they would review new scientific information on potential health risks of fluoride in drinking water. Due to new data coming out about the harms of water fluoridation, I, along with many residents, feel that it would be incredibly beneficial for Article seven to be put on the next ballot. At the end of the day, water fluoridation is something that residents pay for with their tax dollars. It is forced medication arguably without informed consent, and it's an incredibly nuanced issue with convincing arguments being made for and against it. A vote in favor of this petition is a vote in favor of residents educating themselves. Just because they're not like experts doesn't mean their opinions don't matter. They're more than able to weigh what experts on both sides say and make their own decisions, and as the people drinking the water, they feel the weight of the decision the most. Their opinions matter most of all, especially at a time when, in some cases, the American public can feel like so much is out of their... the American public can feel like so much is out of their control, uh, when they feel like they maybe can't rely on officials to make decisions in their best interests. A vote in favor of this petition would show the residents that, uh, we trust them and their ability to come to informed conclusions. Is there any reason that this board would not support the article at town meeting? That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Rajwani. Um, the board will take up this topic under the next agenda item, but board members, are there any questions that you have for Mr. Rajwani while we have him?
I have a, maybe two questions. Um, I remember the one, I think it's important to note, during the, uh, Finance Committee, I think it was mentioned by Water Department, that there is natural fluoride in Shrewsbury water. Can you maybe explain the difference between that and added, the additive fluoride?
Yes, of course. So, natural fluoride, they're actually two different, like, chemicals. Natural fluoride is calcium fluoride, and it occurs naturally in the water at about, I want to say, like, point-one milligrams per liter, somewhere around there. I don't remember the exact number. Um, it's less soluble in water, and it also bioaccumulates less in people. So generally, it's not considered to have many of the same effects as what we have in our water, which is, uh, sodium fluoride, which is a byproduct of, like, the pet, I want to say, I think it's fertilizer industry and also the aluminum-producing industries. But, so it's very different. Sodium fluoride bioaccumulates much more in people. It accumulates, about fifty percent of it accumulates in adults, and about eighty percent accumulates in children. And it just is very soluble in water. And, I'm trying to think. Generally, most of the risks associated with systemic fluoride consumption are linked to sodium fluoride, what we have, not calcium fluoride, which is what naturally occurs at lower levels in the water.
Okay, then one last follow-up. And then the, I guess, other question is, did you, can you comment at all about the cost aspect? For instance, if I'm an individual who, um, let's say, let's say we remove fluoride. Uh, if I'm an individual who would want fluoride, what would be the cost at that point for me to get it? And then on the, on the, on the other side of that argument, if we kept it in, what would be the cost of an individual to remove it on my own? Is there a difference there?
Of course, yeah, that's a good question. That's like, definitely something a lot of people worry about, and for good reason. But, uh, as far as I've found, it's not too difficult to have, to get fluoride through other sources. So, I know some, like, food stamps programs offer fluoridated water that you can buy. I think it's called the SNAP program. And then, on top of that, I think, Mass Health Insurance Companies, or insurance for, like, lower-income families, offer free dental cleanings. When Sigamon Community College offers very, like, relatively cheap cleanings for children and adults. And then there's also some program through Shrewsbury Public Schools, and I'm blanking on the name, but they offer, like, oral health education. I remember, this is, I'm thinking way back to, like, elementary school at, like, Spring Street, but I was, I got, I remember oral health education. I remember, like, coming home with, like, a toothbrush and toothpaste one day. And generally, all these options are pretty cheap. I think, let me try to think. I think there's one more. There's a couple of, um, dental health clinics in Worcester, and their costs, like, scales depending on how much income you have. So, I think I would need to do more research on that, but I think that it's for lower-income individuals. There are definitely other ways to get adequate dental care and fluoridated water. And of course, you also can, like, get fluoride supplements and things like that, which is also systemic fluoride. Um, on the other side of that, from what I can tell, it's a little more expensive to get fluoride taken out. The only way you can get it out through, like, a filter is, um, like, reverse osmosis, which is pretty costly. I think it goes, for a whole house, it can be as expensive as, like, fifty thousand dollars, and for specific pumps, it can, it's in the thousands. And then if you want fluoridated, like, just fluoridated, or unfluoridated water, like bottled water, uh, it depends, of course, on how much water you drink, but that can be up to about three-hundred dollars a month is a figure I've seen on that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, just one question, but first, I want to congratulate you on the award you received last week at the school committee.
Thank you.
I think it's always great when young people are recognized for the good work they do. Um, I did have a question because in your verbal presentation, you mentioned, um, a future election ballot, but in the article, in the petition, it mentions the, um, the local election, the next annual election. So, it sounds like there would be some flexibility there with when the question could be asked. Is, am I correct in that?
Yes, for sure. I think, I remember Mr. Mizikar spoke about this at the last town meeting. Currently, the language says that it has to happen next year, but I think it's a pretty easy fix, just slightly tweaking the language, and then it can occur just basically, as soon as it gets through the state legislature, it'll be at the next town meeting. So, like, or not town meeting, uh, annual election. So, if it gets through by May twenty-twenty-six, it could be in that one. But if it doesn't, which would be completely okay, it'd just be a slight tweak to the article's language, then it would be in the May of twenty-twenty-seven. It's definitely a pretty, as far as I know, it's a pretty, uh, easy fix, or it's like an easy change.
Okay. And I, I guess I was curious on if this could be something that would be included on a general election in November?
In November? I've, I think it would be in a May general election, but I'm not too sure on that. I can definitely research and get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it. Item number nine is to review and act on recommendations relative to the articles on the warrant for the October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting. So, um, I'll go through the, I know we've reviewed these several times. I'll just go through them, uh, very quickly. And our purpose here is to, uh, determine if we make recommendations on each article. So, Article One is regarding adjustments to the fiscal twenty-six operating budget.
Okay, move to recommend Article One.
It was, I'm not going in into.
All right.
I can go into more detail if people want, or.
We can see what you're gonna do.
All right.
Move to recommend Article One.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, Article One is recommended. Five to zero. Okay, Article Two is to amend the fiscal twenty-six solid waste and recycling enterprise fund budget.
Move to recommend Article Two.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Recommended five to zero. Article Three is to transfer funds to purchase an ambulance for the fire department.
Move to recommend Article Three.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Recommended five to zero. Article Four is to transfer funds to the opioid, excuse me, opioid prevention special revenue fund.
Move to recommend Article Four.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five to zero. Article Five is to appropriate funds received from the transportation network companies per ride assessment.
Move to recommend Article Five.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to recommend five to zero. Article Six is to fund bills incurred in a prior fiscal year, which there have not been any, so are we recommend to defeat or to?
We will at town meeting, but we'll.
We will at town meeting. Okay, so we'll delay. We don't need to take a vote to delay, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, Article Seven is the citizen's petition for the enactment of special legislation that we just heard a summary of.
Move to recommend Article Seven.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Richards.
I just want to make a couple of comments on this article specifically, just to remind of, I think the process is super important, that historically, I know it's been brought up, that this has been brought up to town meeting before, but the prior efforts were not following the process required by Massachusetts state law that would have made it effective. So, this is the only way in order to allow residents, or actually even town meeting, to weigh in on it. So, I'm a huge fan of direct democracy. I know people have mentioned that that's why we have a representative town meeting, but in this particular case, town meeting does not have the authority directly to act, to modify fluoridation status of our water. And the only way for them, in my opinion, you know, to really represent their constituents would be to allow the constituents to vote on it by essentially recommending this article. It's just how Massachusetts law is written. Um, and then, my own personal belief on this is that, you know, from a standpoint of even the Health Department mentioned it's a critical medical intervention, and anytime there's a medical intervention, you know, I believe there should be some choice on behalf of those who are receiving that. And, you know, when you're delivering medication, I think you always have to look at it, the standpoint of, you want to make sure you're diagnosing before prescribing. So I think all members of the public should have the ability to weigh in on this and make a decision for themselves. So, that's where I'm at on this.
Madam Chair. Garcia.
Um, thank you. I also will be supporting this article. Shrewsbury has been fluoridating its water supply since the early nineteen-fifties, and in the late nineteen-sixties, the Commonwealth established a law that empowered residents to call for a referendum if a local Board of Health voted to fluoridate its water supply. Because of the way that Shrewsbury began fluor- fluoridating its water, and because it occurred before the state law was in place, Shrewsbury's residents have never had an opportunity to vote on the matter. I want to underscore that I have full faith in our Board of Health and our Health Department. As someone who was diagnosed with type-one diabetes at the age of three, health professionals have always been a constant in my life, and I have full confidence in the recommendations that health professionals make on a daily, daily basis. As a town meeting member, I have historically been opposed to the removal of fluoride from the water supply. My support of this article is not to question their expertise, but instead on process. Since Shrewsbury never had a triggering mechanism after the state law was enacted, I believe that a town-wide vote on the matter will inform us on whether or not this is a practice the community would like to see the town continue to do. If this passes town meeting, I also would recommend that this board request that this instead be placed on the general election ballot in November to guarantee a higher turnout, to get a more accurate reflection of where our community stands on this. That also would ensure that residents could get more time to study the question, since we do not have a timeline for when the legislature might act on this. So I'll be voting yes.
Any other?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean, like, okay. I meant okay.
Um, I definitely respect, uh, the opinions of my colleagues, and I do care deeply about what goes into our water and how we make decisions in town. Um, I do want to thank Mr. Rajwani for the time he's put into his, uh, article. Uh, the topic of fluoride has come before us twice before. Um, I've supported it, removal from the water both times, um, even though town meeting had voted to keep it in. But I think that the article before us tonight isn't really about fluoride. It's about what should be decided at the ballot box. Um, and I would like to just take a few minutes to explain why I'm not going to be recommending this article. Um, in recent months, I think we've seen an erosion in trust in government institutions, especially public health, health science, research, and evidence-based recommendations that exist to keep communities safe. Experts are being dismissed and replaced by internet searches that produce theories that spread faster than facts and lead to fear-based decision-making. This article seeks to reopen something that town meeting has already decided twice and frames it as promoting democracy and transparency. And letting the people decide every issue through a popular vote is not the foundation of our democracy, and this article doesn't necessarily strengthen our democracy. I think it undermines the Board of Health by asking voters to make a complex scientific decision without the benefit of understanding. Not every issue should go to a popular vote just to reach a final decision. I see elections as settling politics, but not science. And no matter the outcome, some people will always feel unheard and suffer the consequences of our actions. That's why we rely on experts to make decisions based on the wide body of reputable science and evidence rather than emotion. Recommending this article would send a message that proven public health measures are open to debate by anyone, regardless of expertise, and that they can change with each election cycle. I do not favor a system where we sideline experts and bring everything to a popular vote in the name of democracy. While I respect the passion behind the petition, and I see that there are many engaged residents here who support this petition, uh, I do believe it's our duty to stand up for science and public health and draw a distinction between what is decided through the political process and what is not. So that is why I am not supporting this article this evening.
I, I think my position is, is very similar. I don't see this as, you know, I was elected to govern and not to sort of put every decision before the public. I said at prior meetings that I have not heard an overwhelming, um, request for this from the public, which generated some emails. I got less than twenty emails on it. Um, I think that this is about a campaign to end fluoridation of water in Shrewsbury. It can't be that, oh, this is just about giving the public a choice. And I think it makes it political. And I think that town meeting members should pay close attention to the document that was provided in the town meeting packet. Um, because I think that, you know, we're going down this road of the CDC and the Board of Health and the town and the state, and everybody is intentionally harming residents. And while there seems to be this, oh, it's balanced and let people do their own research, this is going to be a heavy campaign with a lot of what I feel is, um, you know, I don't know that people are going to know where to get, um, accurate information. So, it's, um, I do think it's important that we allow public health policy to be set by, um, the Board of Health. And so, I think that it will be a great conversation at town meeting, but I just think that people really need to look at, um, what this is, which is generating a, a campaign. And people will have to be very, uh, careful about where they get their information, and that can be difficult because I think we're seeing there is a lot of conflicting information. Um, and so, I am also not recommending, um, this article for that reason.
If I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
So, obviously, in, in Shrewsbury, the town manager appoints the Board of Health, and, um, we have a lot of responsibility, staff, three-hundred-and-thirty staff across all departments, and we make a lot of decisions, uh, professional staff charged with serving the residents of Shrewsbury, and we take a lot of pride in that. And I also want to recognize the, the work that has gone into Article VII and the interest that residents have in, in this matter. Um, and my comments are not about fluoride, but they're about process. Um, and I think this discussion raises the broader question, you know, do we continue to rely upon the representative processes that have served us well? Where boards, committees, and professional staff work transparently and weigh evidence, deliberate with the community, and make decisions on their behalf? Or do we move in a direction of re- uh, referenda on individual issues? Um, in this process alone, questions have been raised about whether staff and boards can and should provide their opinion, because a referendum may happen. Um, in my view, they must provide their opinion. More importantly, state law and state policy fully support that role because of the responsibility these boards carry on behalf of the community. And I know, uh, at first glance, as many have said, a referendum can seem like a democratic approach. Yet, in practice, it often oversimplifies challenging questions that require careful study, context, and balance. Democratic processes go well beyond voting. Uh, they include institutions, safeguards, professional expertise, and ensure decisions serve the common good, not just the moment or the majority. Studies show that publicentary approaches often weaken deliberative processes and marginalize input and produce, uh, less informed policy outcomes. So, um, I think the, the framework that we've had in place and serves this community so well, the, the full, true, robust democratic process requ- requires engaging the entire system. Um, and I know it depends on confidence. And I know it depends on confidence in that system. And I'm here to serve and do whatever we can to ensure that that trust is as full and robust as possible. The board of health also has the authority to make this decision and full and proper engagement with them could have brought a different discussion with much more input from many more folks.
There are no other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
It's already moved in second.
Oh, it was? I'm sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. So I look at this as recommended. Two to three, right?
It's not recommended.
Not recommended. Thank you. Three to two. Article eight.
Move to recommend Article eight.
Second.
Hmm, discussion? Okay.
Happy to start.
Oh, okay. Whatever you want. That's fine.
I mean, Article eight is the feasibility study, funding the feasibility study for the high school building committee. You know, it's an opportunity to get a understanding of what the costs will be to mitigate the overcrowding at the Shrewsbury High School. And I think that town meeting overwhelmingly voted to establish this building committee, which has just had a couple of meetings. And this would be the logical next step. So while I have been hesitant in the past to move forward with the high school project, I do recognize town meeting's willingness to move ahead and that the building committee has been formed. And I support this article because I want us to maintain our place in line with the MSBA. And we have a deadline to meet of November 28th to have this funding in place in order to move ahead with the feasibility study. So I will be voting to recommend this article.
Yes, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree. I think it's very important that we continue to stay on track with the MSBA process so that we can fully study what the project is and so that the building committee can do its work to make a recommendation. This community has demonstrated in the past several times that they are willing to invest in our education system. And it is one of the leading reasons why Shrewsbury is a desirable community to live in. I worry that by defeating this article and removing ourselves from the MSBA process, that we will be setting ourselves back, which will negatively impact our students. As a former student of the high school, I know firsthand how the overcrowding of the building affected me and my peers. This article will enable the building committee to do the work necessary for the community and the town to understand what the full scope of work will be to address the concerns of the high school.
I'll be voting in favor of this article. We are currently in the process of finding out if the MSBA will grant us up to 52%, I believe is the current number, of the cost of the expansion of the school. We, our school, our high school has been overcrowded for almost as long as it's been open. And there is no relief in sight of that. If we remove ourselves from the process with the MSBA at this point, we may never have the opportunity to have the state fund the 50, over 50% of the cost of this expansion again. It is entirely possible, given the increased costs of construction and increased needs in the state, that the MSBA may never invite us into this process again. So if we forego this opportunity now, when the town, if the town decides to forego this opportunity now, if we ever decide to expand the high school in the future, we may have to foot the bill in its entirety. And I struggle with letting go of this opportunity with the MSBA. So I will be voting in favor of this.
Okay. When I look at this, I kind of look at it from kind of a slightly different angle. I just look at it from a standpoint of in order to give voters of Shrewsbury the most amount of information to make the best decision possible. We as a town do not have the resources to execute this study and the depth that needs to be done. And unfortunately, the MSBA process exists and the only way to continue down the path is to perform the feasibility study, which they are co-funding. So when I look at, is it worth us to spend effectively a million and a half dollars? I know we have to approve three, but we're going to get half of that paid for. The information we're going to get from that will give the community the best ability to make the best decision. And as they mentioned in one of the bullet points, you know, the most cost-effective and educationally appropriate solution. I don't really believe in the fact that we would never get back in an MSBA process. I know the overcrowding has been going on for a long time. You know, I think, you know, it's highly probable in the future we may get back into it. But we're in it now. Construction costs are going up. And we have the opportunity now just to move forward and at least allow the community to make the decision. So I do support that, but I kind of do have an ask throughout the process. And really my ask is just that as we go through this process in the community, we're going to be asking, which we often do, for any kind of debt exclusion override, for the community to give something up. You're asking people to rebudget, to spend their money, to reduce what they're able to spend because they have more percentage of their income is going towards construction project. And many who are on fixed incomes, that's difficult. And I think we need to reconcile, you know, recognize that. So when we go through these processes, I think not only the school committee, but you know, the town as a whole should always think of what are we going to give up in order to move these things forward? Because it can't always just be that we're asking the residents to keep giving more and more without looking at how are we going to be better, more efficient, reduce our overall cost. So I am going to support it because I think we need to get the information. But that doesn't mean that ultimately we're going to support the project once we figure out what it is and the cost of it at the ballot box.
I feel like I've been on record that I don't think it's fiscally responsible to pursue an expansion to the high school at this time. And I understand everything that has been said. It's like the Article VII. It's, I see both sides of situations. But the MSBA guidelines make it clear that the scope for an expansion will be material. And we have to meet their guidelines in order to qualify for funding. So it's not like we're going to come out of this without a material expansion. It's not like they won't approve. They're solving for the overcrowding, so they won't pay for the repairs or the HVAC, et cetera. So I feel as though, you know, based on my time on this board and some of the big things that we've gone through, I keep hearing from people, how did we get here? How did we get here? So I want, I guess I'm ringing the bell. This is how we get here. 65% of our operating budget is schools. We have to have an override to sustain what we have. And I'm not confident that residents will approve, you know, an override to basically sustain what we have, plus a debt exclusion of what is going to be a material amount, plus the increased cost of additional staffing and curriculum. And I'll reflect on what you said. Like, what do we give up? You know, the remaining part of the operating budget pays for everything else. It pays for all public safety, police, fire, other town services. It's like, I don't know where we, you know, constrict. And it's, I hope I've gone on record, this is not about not supporting our schools or our students. It's a really difficult position for us to be in. It is just, I'm concerned about our ability for residents to pay for what we need, never mind something additional of this size on top of it. And it's difficult to say that, but I just feel that I can completely, I understand your logic behind, you need the study in order for the town to know what they're voting on. And I completely get that, but I know where this is going. And I'm just, I'm taking a position because I'm concerned. And so I think I will be the one person who does not recommend this article.
Okay. Want to take a vote? Oh, we already, I know, sorry. We did move it.
Maybe I should ask for discussion before we do that. You did.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One day, so we recommend four to one. Okay, thanks. Okay. We're in item number 10. To review and act to authorize the town manager to sign the deed and all related closing documents for the sale of 1 through 7 Maple Avenue. Mr. Mizakar, do you want to walk us through where we were at with this?
Sure. So we're last before the board on August 12th regarding this matter, in which at that time did not recommend that we were ready to take action. And the board considered a 60-day extension on the timeline for the land disposition agreement. That agreement lays out six specific things that are required to be produced in order to close. And from the time of that last meeting, we have received a loan commitment letter from a bank that has been, you know, signed off on in order to, I think substantially and fully show their financial plan and accompanying documents all satisfy and meet the requirements that have been set forth in the land disposition agreement. I have consulted with council and they are satisfied that it meets the legal requirements and obligations that have been set forth in the land disposition agreement. We have until October 21st to close on the property. So at that, this being the last meeting before, and now that we are in a position where they have provided all documentation that's required in order to close, I would recommend the board authorize myself to sign off on the deed and related closing documents for the sale of 1 through 7 Maple Avenue. I will add as a final point that if at any point up until the certificate of occupancy is issued for this project, if developer does not satisfy their requirements, then the property is reverted back to the town. So that is the overarching umbrella that provides perfection to the town up and through, including the construction process. So all documents in place and have been satisfied and has sustained legal review. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Board members, any questions?
Yes. Well, I kind of disagree with the, and I'll explain why, that they've satisfied. In the land disposition, well, two comments I'll make. Number one, as I mentioned last time, the land disposition agreement clearly says 60 days prior to closing. And again, we as a board did not receive documentation until after 5 o'clock today. We've given two hours to digest the information related to essentially the prime property in our town center district for the remainder of time. I just, I just don't think that is the level of partnership we're looking for when we're given such little time to even digest what we're supposed to be reviewing. And in that land disposition agreement, it says the commitment letter is to be of $14 million. And the glaring piece is it's 12.7. And that requires an equity contribution of 6.375 million, which they have to spend before they get any money from the bank. And there is zero evidence of 6.375 million. There is evidence of $585,000 on a balance sheet. But there's a huge gap in proof of cash equity to get us to the point where they're satisfying the requirements of the land disposition agreement. So I'm struggling to understand how we can move forward without any evidence of the substantial equity position that they have to have in order to satisfy the requirements of the loan. And the letter was only signed, docu-signed, was never submitted to the bank. It was docu-signed by consigliere and sent to us, but it's not transmitted to the bank. So that's where I'm struggling is, number one, having two hours to review all this. And number two, they don't meet the equity requirement. I haven't seen evidence.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm happy to respond if that's what you'd like me to do. So the $14 million is not an absolute requirement of the land disposition agreement. The agreement itself says, "A submittal of a commitment letter from an institutional letter of at least $14 million shall be deemed reasonable satisfactory evidence." And that's the final sentence in that section, which, you know, talks about pro forma, et cetera. So it's not an absolute requirement. It's quote-unquote "the gold standard." If they would have provided us a letter from a bank that showed $14 million in a loan, then they wouldn't have to substantiate or show or have a contingency with regards to any equity. They could just have a $14 million loan. They've produced a revised pro forma that shows, you know, total construction cost of $19 million. I consulted with council on the question of equity. The $580,000 that have been provided is not in the bank. It is what has been expended today. And I have been advised by council that in a commercial transaction like this, equity is not required at the time of closing and is not required specifically through the land disposition agreement. And again, they have satisfied all requirements that have been set forth in this agreement. That equity must, as you have stated, must be spent before the bank will issue their loan. But the bank will close on the loan at the time of closing when the deeds are transferred. So everything is in motion. They have one year to commence construction. If they do not satisfy that equity requirement by putting it in and spending it in satisfaction of the bank, then we would begin the reversionary process to get the property back.
I think that was the same question I had, which is, you know, is council absolutely sure that we met the requirements of, or they met the requirements of the LDA? And then, you know, to your point, if they don't meet the equity requirements for the loan, like what is the worst-case scenario? I mean, depending on worst or best case, on your perspective, then we have provisions that would enable us to take it back if they don't meet the requirements to get the loan to proceed with the project. So I want to make sure we're addressing your concerns while also not looking for an obscure loophole, just to have a reason to.
No, I understand what you're saying. I'm not, but I'm looking at it from the aspects of that. The reason we moved forward at the beginning of this was to revitalize the space in the downtown, town center district.
We're not here to.
I know that, but I'm not going down there. Just hold on. Hold on, Teresa. I'm not going down that path. I'm not. But I think it's important to say that because my fear is that I don't want to be in a position where we have to reclaim the land. And I don't believe they're actually going to go forward and build this. And if I'm right, I guess the worst-case scenario is you're right. Greg, you're right. We reclaim the land and we start over. But I just think that this whole process, I just want to be clear, is that I think it's important to note that if it was a true partnership and somebody that we really believe was going to be the best steward of our property forever, we would not be getting documentation the day it's required. Mr. Mizakar set a date, correct me wrong, of last Thursday at 4:30 for documentation, which they did not meet. So it's one missed deadline after another. So while letter of the law and legally, if we can close, so be it. I just think that it's important for the public to know. I just am not thrilled with the way this whole deal has finalized.
I think that's really fair. I mean, I think we're, I'll speak for myself. I agree with you 100% on that. They've met the requirements. They haven't necessarily met their word on, you know, when they were going to provide things. And so we were prepared, recognizing we were going to get it early this afternoon. I recognized that the counter signed one, didn't come in until later, but it was received by the town early afternoon. And we immediately had council jump on it. So it has been worked on throughout the afternoon. And we weren't going to bring it forward if we weren't, you know, confident that it had been reviewed the way it should. And I agree, it's, I hear what you're saying because you're voting on it and you didn't have the time. And so I don't disagree with you there. But I don't think unfortunately that's a reason to not move forward. I think that, you know, did they do it in the timeline that we would have expected? No. But did they meet the requirements? Yes.
Just a note on the timeline, not excusing things coming in two hours before a meeting. You know, they technically have until the 20. You know, they technically have until the 23rd, right? Is that correct?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first of this month. But we were asking for these documents so that we could avoid having to schedule a special meeting in order to sign the deed by the 21st. So I think it was not excusing, right? Because I know they've missed other smaller deadlines.
I mean, the LDA says 60 days before closing. And that's what we talked about in the last meeting too. So it's, it's not the day of. That was what they agreed to, 60 days. I'm just...
But that could never work because we gave them a 60-day extension, so it would have been...
Could have worked because it was a week after. I mean, they've had, I mean, they've had plenty, I think ample time if it was a priority. If it was the same priority that we would give it, I think they would have had the documents into us ahead of time. That's my opinion.
Any other comments or discussion? Entertainer motion?
I move that we authorize the town manager to sign the deed and all related closing documents for the sale of one through seven Maple Avenue.
Second.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Could you address Mr. Boosie's comments or should we revert?
Sure.
Send those? I, I apologize for the chubbiness of like getting public comment and not engaging in discussion at that time, but I thought I meant to say that either we pass that on to the planning board to comment on unless we felt it was appropriate to make any comment. I don't want people to think we just completely overlooked.
I believe the gentleman's comments were related to the height variance special permit, which was not, ultimately determined not to be required by the planning board. So that's why it's documented as such. So it's not an oversight. It's not a miss. It's not a no.
Oh, sorry.
Sure. So the, Mr. McGoldrick, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, you referenced the fact that the special permit was not issued for the height of the building. It was not required. It was ultimately determined that a special permit was not required for that by the planning board as they reviewed. So they submitted for one, but ultimately the plans in the end did not require a special permit to be issued for that. So it wasn't an oversight. It wasn't a miss. It wasn't a mistake. It was a known action of the planning board.
They have a three and a half story plan. Everything is there that's three and a half stories. The by right is two and a half stories. How do you reconcile one to the other?
Yeah, I want, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I, since it's not a public hearing, I think that I would like for the town manager to follow up with you to, to discuss it in, in more detail, but I didn't want there to be the, the perception that we were just disregarding your, your comments, but we definitely want to, to follow up on them. But I didn't want there to be a feeling that we were engaging in this final step with this being a possible conflict. So I will ask the town manager to follow up with you directly.
Okay.
Okay. So there's a, sorry, there's been a motion.
Before you sign the documents?
I'm not sure. See what we can do. Motion to, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes four to one. Okay. Item number 11 is to review and act on the request from Aquiline Utility for a temporary daytime road closure of Tatum Road from Rolfe Avenue to 288 Tatum Road from October 20th, 2025 through November 14th, 2025 between 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM. This is related to the Maple Ave and Rolfe Avenue Pump Station Enforce Main Replacement Project. And Tim Maroney, Water and Sewer Superintendent, is here on behalf of the DPW to explain this in more detail and answer any questions from the board.
Certainly, we have Aquiline.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as you said, this is part of the Maple Rolfe Pump Station Enforcement Project. They're looking to install 900 linear feet of 18-inch sewer main from October 20th to the 14th, from 7:00 to 3:00. We have vetted this process through the Fire Police School Department and the Solid Waste and Recycling folks. So we'll obviously work with other residents on notifications. So if there's any real technical stuff, Aquiline will handle it. So you guys have questions too also.
Board members, any questions? Been a lot of road closures. I do have a question. Does this require any police detail?
Yes.
Yes.
It does. Okay. I didn't see anything in there from, usually we get, like, does that...
You've got my email address from...
Yeah, I'll send you an email tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Sorry for the interruption.
Yeah, I believe it is in there.
Oh, did I mess up? I have a question.
Go ahead.
In your manager's report, you responded to a question from Ms. Conlon that the work was done on...
Maple Ave.
So when you met, you met not on the project, you just met on Maple Ave specifically?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a continuation of that? Okay. Got it.
So I have, just have a question, if that's all right, regarding, so it looks like there are six houses in the area that will not have, that where, where there will be a full road closure. Will residents, I'm assuming the, is it local traffic only at the intersections surrounding it? Or like how will those residents, will they be able to get in and out of their driveways during workdays?
Yeah, we will maintain the access for the residents.
Okay. All right. Okay. So as always, we rely on town staff just to make sure that residents in that area are well aware, that we do as much as possible to mitigate any disruption, make sure trash pickups and all that fun stuff is taken care of. So we have no concerns, but that will all be followed. I'll entertain a motion.
I move the board approve the temporary daytime closure of Tatum Road from Rolfe Avenue to 288 Tatum Road from October 20th, 2025 through November 14th, 2025 between the hours of 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM as requested by Aquiline Utility, Inc. in coordination with the Department of Public Works.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is to...
I've got several questions on road closures. Just popped in question.
How we can take it out of purview of the board?
No.
Okay.
But it's about the time because we're specific on a time. This is a question back to last Wednesday.
Sure.
Just a procedural question because when we approve it for a specific time and then the time changes, how is that approval mechanism done? Because if we approve a closure from three to six PM and then it changes from two, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so last Wednesday, I think with regards to the filming on, along Route 20 and Grafton Street, I received a call from the chief of police, you know, requesting the ability to change it because of weather conditions and timing and light and all that. So I contacted the chair and said, I know the board set a timeframe, but is there any objection at the discretion of the chief to allow them to move that? And so that's the how, that's how I went through. Okay. So maybe we should be, some type, some aspect of the vote should reflect that perhaps, you know, at the discretion of the town engineer or the chief of police in, in future, just to give us a little discretion so folks may understand that we could change. You know, we don't know what the weather's going to be like on November 14th, so be happy to reconsider that, how we do it in the future.
I think that would make sense, just to give you flexibility.
Yep. Okay. I'm sorry. Item 12. Did we vote on?
Yeah, we're done.
Oh, we're good.
Didn't we?
Did we?
We did. I crossed it off.
I apologize. I did too, and I've planned this for a long day. Item number 12 is to review and act to allow the chair to sign the fiscal 26 Massachusetts Housing Partnership Chapter 40B Technical Assistance Program application for the zoning Board of Appeals for the residences at Friars Farm Road, 409 South Street. This technical assistance program provides grants to municipalities to obtain third-party consultant services to assist in the review of the Chapter 40B comprehensive permit projects. The consultant provides technical and procedural guidance throughout the hearing process, assists in identifying areas requiring further study. Am I stealing all of your thunder, Mr. Goldrick?
Keep going.
He's here for the next item.
Assists in identifying areas requiring further study and helps the ZVA draft its decision in accordance with 40B regulations. So in other words, there is time and labor and costs that's associated with the town to review these types of projects and the state does provide the opportunity for grants, which we have clearly tried to take advantage of. So, Mr. McGoldrick from Planning and Economic Development Department, you want to provide any other detail?
No, I, I think that sums it up very accurately. So this goes above what the staff hours that are committed, just provides an additional layer of support and technical expertise to the process through the consultant in relation to the, the staff hours, town council review, all those still happen, but this provides additional support to supplement some of those services as well. So smaller procedural items can be handled through this grant rather than going to town council. So reduces the local cost.
One question.
Yes.
Do we utilize the same consultant we have for 104? Is it consistent?
So technically you have to select your top three consultants. We've put our, the one that is currently with 104 as our top choice. Obviously, I think there's a shared benefit of using the same consultant for the same meeting rather than having two to attend.
I agree.
There are no other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move the board review and act to authorize the chair to sign the FY 26 MHP Chapter 40B Technical Assistance Program application to support the zoning Board of Appeals and the review of the residences at Friar Farm Comprehensive Permit located at 409 South Street.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGoldrick.
He's staying here. I thought he was staying here.
Stay. Sorry.
Stuck with us.
I'm stuck with us.
He's staying here.
Item number 13 is to review and discuss development in zoning overlay districts along Route 9 and Route 20 corridors. Mr. Mizakar.
So the Planning and Economic Development Department, Mr. McGoldrick, has prepared a memorandum for the board to consider as we look at addressing the concerns that the board has raised and we certainly agree, agree with with regards to development, traffic, infrastructure, roadway safety along Route 9 and Route 20, and specifically associated with the pace of development that's being taken on through the overlay districts that exist within those corridors. So Mr. McGoldrick has laid out a really concise plan for moratorium, challenges that we'd need to review and looking at our zoning and a timeframe to consider that under. And through the chair, I'll turn it over to Mr. McGoldrick to add any additional comments of what he has found in his study and what the process would be moving forward.
Thank you. So I think that sums up the majority of the memorandum. I think the draft does a lot of the speaking for itself, but primarily this is looking at providing a moratorium which will allow the town time to consider through a number of avenues, potential land use changes related to those overlay zones. So those overlay zones are over two decades old. The last substantive changes were a decade ago. So similar to the master plan process, as we're reviewing some of those major critical kind of planning and land use documents, it's prudent to, to look at the land use zoning. So we understand it's a, a topic that the town would like to undertake. So we outline the procedural steps, successes and challenges, and then what that process would entail, so.
Board members, any, we are going to talk about the next two agenda items, which is how we bring this to special town meeting and how we submit the amendments to the planning board. So just to answer what I think might be a burning question, why is this not on the special town meeting warrant that we just went through? And it has to go through a process and it has to go through planning board approval and public comment, et cetera. So unfortunately, we want to do it right. We want to do it expeditiously, but we cannot do it for the, the meeting next week. So, board members, any questions for Mr. McGoldrick at this time?
I have a question, but I had submitted to the manager just a comment that we should include the Route 20 master plan document as part of the, the data that we look at and to consolidate as we're reviewing the Route 20 overlay.
Thanks.
And then I think the other, only other comment, and that was, and some of the feedback actually from Mr. Mizakar and my questions, because it was a lot, timing based things, is if we could map out with dates ahead of time, release of target dates and try to, more specifically per se, of here's the gating pieces that we have to complete and by when, just so earlier on. Because my, my whole concern in this whole piece was that once, let's say, we do pass and we set that maximum end date of December of 2027, working backwards to make sure that along the way, that if something would come up that we know is going to prevent us from completing the task that we know sooner than later, so that that could be addressed. So that was, I know there's a lot of pieces to this that is more complicated than is really outlined initially, but a master schedule would be super helpful just to make sure we're hitting all those milestone dates.
Mr. McGoldrick, is it fair that we can create a tab on the webpage to just host this information?
Yeah.
And it'll probably also be hosted when we do the special town meeting agenda, but just make sure that we're also sort of clear on directing the public as to where they can get more information.
Yeah, we'll create a webpage and then I know Tanner in the town manager's office, we'll communicate a lot of that out and we'll get that out to the public so they're aware.
Great.
Chairman Chair, thank you. I just wanted to thank you for the work on this. It is, of course, a priority of, of our board, but I think the town and, you know, zoning is complicated, as I said in our, when we previously discussed this, and we got to make sure that whatever case we're making, it's a, it's a good and strong one. So really, just appreciate that we're taking the time to do this. I did have a question on the protections that we might have as a town in the interim period of time, when and if this is passed at town meeting and AGO approval. I know there's the 90-day or 60-day window, so are we protected in that time or...
Yeah, so the effective date of the zoning changes go back to the first notice of town meeting, of the article and the public, public hearing with the planning board.
Okay.
So we would be backwards effective to that.
Good.
So that does create, you know, during that time of the town meeting process and that, you know, typically, for example, with accessory dwelling units regulations, we provided some disclaimers for anyone who was applying for permits under those so that they're aware that that could change.
Okay. That's, that's helpful. Thank you for that because I know that there were some residents who were concerned that we weren't maybe working on this, this fast enough and, you know, of course, we want to make sure that we're doing it properly. And if we did a rushed job, you know, I would hate to see all that work just get kind of thrown out. So thank you for that.
Okay. This particular item does not require any further action. But item number 14 is to review and act to set the date for a special town meeting on December 17th, 2025 to allow town meeting to vote on this.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And item number 15 is to review and act to submit the proposed amendments to the zoning by, of the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw to the planning board.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number 16 is to review and act to designate the title of senior engineers as special municipal employee in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 2268A. This is so that a senior engineer in the DPW can also be employed by the town as a winter seasonal laborer, which would be a plow driver in this particular instance. So under the Conflict of Interest Law, municipal employees prohibited from holding multiple positions unless designated as a special municipal employee.
positions unless designated as a special municipal employee. So, board members, if there are no objections or questions, I would.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 17 is to review and act on the ABCC return no action for Blazin' Wings, Inc., DBA Buffalo Wild Wings, 7, I'm sorry, 476 Boston Turnpike, change of officers and directors. So we approved the change of officers and directors application at our last meeting. The Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission requested corrections to the application. The applicant worked directly with the ABCC to correct and resubmit the required documentation. So we're required to acknowledge receipt of the corrected materials before they are forwarded back to the ABCC for reconsideration. There were no material changes to the application, and these were more administrative corrections. So if there's no concerns, entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Correspondence. Excuse me. Item number 18 is a quarterly warrant return of animal control officer Keith Elms, July 1st through September 30th, 2025, so noted. 19 is an email dated September 26th, 2025 from Deborah Wagner, Director of Accounts, Massachusetts Department of Revenue regarding the notification of free cash approval, so noted. Number 20 is an email dated September 26th, 2025 from Christopher Wilcock, Bureau Local Assessment regarding notification of preliminary certification, so noted. 21 is an email dated September 29th, 2025 from Peter Mulcahy for Richard Avenue regarding resignation from the zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Mulcahy is moving and we thank him for his service to Shrewsbury. Item number 22 is an email dated October 7th, 2025 from Lucas Remington, 73 Stony Hill Road regarding the application to fill Affordable Housing Trust vacancy. We still need to fill that, so we will address that at a future meeting. Number 23 is an email dated Tuesday, September 7th, 2025 from Elaine Vadenees, 45 Bruce Street regarding wreaths. We did confirm with Ms. Vadenees that the wreaths will be held, hung in the town this year as in prior years. Email, I'm sorry, number 24 is an email dated October 8th, 2025 from Dale McGee, 28 Oak Ridge Way regarding fluoride vote petition, so noted. Number 25 is an email dated October 8th, 2025 from Julie Boris, 6 Catalina Drive, regarded faces of vaccine injury, 2025, so noted. Email, number 26 is an email dated October 8th, 2025 from Carrie Shea, Legislative aide to State Representative Hannah Kane regarding Justice Assistance Grant Program award. The Executive Office of Public Safety and Security has awarded the Shrewsbury Police Department $28,260 from the Justice Assistance Grants, Grant Program for Fiscal 25. So we thank State Representative Kane for her advocacy in this regard. Number 27 is a letter dated October 8th, 2025 from Erin Boucher, Chair of the School Committee Regarding Form of Government Study Committee. The school committee has sent us a letter requesting that we amend the charge for the Form of Government Study Committee to include a member of the school committee, which we have previously discussed and not taken action on in prior meetings. Board members, is there anyone who wants to reconsider this?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I just want to say that the charge does deliberately state that there will be outreach to appointed and elected officials in the town, which include the school committee. And so all five members of the school committee will be involved with this process as well as the school administration. I just wanted to elevate that.
Maybe also mention that this committee does not make the decision, it's making recommendations. So I think the entire community will have the opportunity to opine on their preferred form of government.
I think at our last meeting, when we discussed this, one of the options before us was to amend the charge to allow for a member of the school committee, and at the time, we did not choose to do that. So I'm not sure that we would want to walk that back and change it at this point, knowing that there's an opportunity for participation.
So when I said, we talked about that?
Yeah.
Like decided not to?
Yeah. You said that?
I did. All right. I don't often say it, but it's nice that we agree on that. All right. Any other discussion? I will respond to Ms. Boucher with our, with our response. Number 28 is an email dated October 9th, 2025 from Dr. Joe Sawyer, Superintendent of Schools regarding message from Superintendent, Mr. Sawyer, Dr. Sawyer is retiring in June of 2026, and I think we're all still processing that. So we wish him well, but, you know, plenty of time to recognize him for his amazing contributions to the community. And that concludes our agenda, so if there's not anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.